Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand, we'll have our invocation and the pledge led by Councilman Stepp. And tonight for our invocation, I would just ask for a moment of silence.
Please don't. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kiril in the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jayce Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Thompson, Ward 3.
Here.
Lucy McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lloyd Crute, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our last meeting that was held on July 5th. Council, you've had these minutes well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any edits, corrections, or motions.
Mayor, I didn't see any corrections or additions, but I should just read.
Second.
And a motion to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We have the first reading of an ordinance tonight. Who's going to tell us all about that?
I think we need the pre-meeting. Actually, that's random.
Y'all not looked at the agenda for tonight?
Second, isn't it? The second reading?
Well, it says first reading of an ordinance.
The one I got.
Of Council item B1.
Second reading.
I've got... Yours is...
Yeah?
That'd be his.
I've got Amendment to Ordinance, Chapter 1, General Provisions.
We got him.
Is that you, Tom?
I'm going to try.
Don't remind me next time we don't have the pre-meeting to hash all this out. We'll get through it, we'll be just fine.
Sure took us an hour to figure that out.
Working with Keith Lovell, this is an ordinance change to, in Chapter 1, Section 1.6, to add Section F. Community service may be substituted or defined with the rate of hourly work set to the federal minimum wage. This is in response to the next item on the agenda, the ordinance for a change in the funding fees.
Okay. Any questions on that item?
I have a suggestion. I think it'd be important to remind everyone what the regulations are, for example, about the water ban and some of the other provisions in these ordinances.
The water ban is on our website. We do update that regularly. Folks can go to cityofcartersville.org on that, and I'm sure Ed would be glad to take the time to remind folks exactly what that is or the other ones you had a question about.
You good? Any other questions? Louis, did that address your concern?
Well, I think so. Just anything that we help people be aware of that, because it's more important that they observe the ban than we make money off of the fines.
Right.
Very good. All right, any other questions for Tom on this item?
Mayor, just a discussion. As I read over these, it's not completely consistent, but mostly we are just updating this to make sure that we cover, that we are consistent with counties and cities around us and that we...
It's an up...
Help the base amount as well as what the state also gets. I think I was maybe unaware of how that...
We have not updated them, I believe, in nine years.
I believe that's what I was told.
And the figure, as I recollect, is that 63 percent now of what people pay actually goes to the state and add-ons.
Yeah.
So very little of this goes to us.
See, Sam, I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, it's, yeah.
It's a big administration...
All kinds of court stuff that are added on, and it's something that I know the Georgia Municipal Association regularly goes through with the legislature during legislative sessions to try and make sure that those are minimized, but they do add them on. And I think maybe to the point of what Louis was going is you have more or less an unrepresented population that has to pay all those fees. They're kind of at the whims of the state, and those are added on, and there's really nothing we can do about that.
Any other discussion?
Just one clarification.
Sure.
The administration fee and the technology fee, which are new, will stay local. Those will not be sent to the state.
That's correct. The administration fee will go to help pay for the salaries and other things to take care of the municipal court. The $28 fee for the technology fee will also stay local and also help in the security and the technology upgrades that we will need to be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Tom. This is the first reading. We'll take this up at our first meeting in August. Thank you. And I guess you want to address the second part, or is it, they're all pretty much the same? Okay.
And I apologize, the chart that you were looking at on the first ordinance actually goes with the second ordinance. So I apologize for that. As a result of the visiting session held in January 2012, a meeting was held several weeks ago with Judge Harry White, the municipal court. We discussed the city's current municipal court fines and fees structure. As a result of the meeting, it was determined that we were below the surrounding areas. Number one, number two, that some of the fees, well, not all the fees actually stated here in Cartersville, has...
Mr. Growth, or Sam?
Hey, you. I respond to that.
As Mr. Growth stated, about 63 percent of those total fines collected today here within the state, within the city of Cartersville. As a result, we have revamped this, and we want to make the base fee, which increase on most of the fees, or most of the fines, the base fee will now stay with us, and we are actually adding on those state surcharges along with the administrative fee that will stay local, plus the technology fee that will also stay local. And again, the chart that was with the first ordinance actually goes with this particular part of the...
All right, any further discussion after those comments?
I guess I'd like to go back to my comment earlier. For example, on the last page, I'm not sure if folks know what the requirements are by walking on a sidewalk.
Where are you at there? What page?
On the back page of these fines.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
In your question?
My question is, I think this is an opportunity to, an education through the media and make people aware, and I'm not sure I know what the requirements are for a funeral procession. But I'm sure there's one other person in Calhoun that might say this, in Cartersville that might say the same thing.
As far as what the requirements are for the funeral procession, is that what you're asking?
I think that's just something we need to do some education on, and otherwise it looks like we're just in this to get some money.
But these aren't any, these aren't any new rules.
I understand that.
And perhaps maybe this, if I could recommend, and if this would be suitable to you, that we perhaps just put a link to this, these charts, these few pages, just put a link on our website that people can go to it, and then they've got a reference code that they can go to if, you know, if they've got a question about it. Does that, does that seem to address your concern?
I think it might.
Okay. I don't know if Rebecca's here, but if you just make an...
Yeah, I will. I'll do that.
I don't know how difficult or easy that is, but I think that seems to be reasonable. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, the subordination agreement in Wingfoot Park.
As you had noted, this is a subordination agreement. Standard agreement, one of our first-time homebuyers in the CHIPS program is refinancing their home, and this basically takes that same agreement from a mortgage company to another mortgage company, got to redo the agreement. They had, or they have five months left on their five-year forgivable term, and with that, they're just going to transfer the remaining with the new mortgage, refinancing it. With that, we do recommend approval of this review. The city attorney's office has reviewed and has recommended.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have a question. Is this something similar to like when you have the Habitat House, you're building on people's property when they owe something? Or leave? Cardiff comes in and build a house up to...
No, this is actually a different program. This is the first-time homebuyer's program in which a first-time homebuyer can qualify to get up to a $10,000 grant or loan as part of their purchase of the home. With that, they agree to stay in the home for five years, not lease or rent when they're occupied, and after five years, they comply with the requirements. That second that is placed on their mortgage for that amount is released. It's a whole different program. This is part of the community home investment program.
It's similar to one we did several years ago. I remember the $10,000.
Yes. We started, I think Cartersville started the program, into the program back in 2000. Every few years, we have to reapply to get so much money for the program to allow us to help with the down payment assistance. It's called a couple of different things, Down Payment Assistance Program, First-Time Home Buyer's Program. You've probably heard of that a couple of times.
I have a question. Randy, as long as they're within the tenure period, can a homeowner get a second mortgage?
They can, but the subordination agreement stays with, in this particular case, is a refinance.
Okay.
And it's actually, I believe this one was a $10,000 loan or grant, and it's a five-year period, which they said.
Okay, so if we look at this figure, we don't know if that's the first mortgage or second mortgage completed. When we look at this figure, we don't know, do we?
Really, all we're doing is consenting to this.
Yeah, I mean, we're just...
Yeah, basically.
It's not really changing the deal.
It's basically, I guess it's like a second that will be released after the five-year contract.
So next year, it's forgiven anyway. I mean, if she's still in the house next year, it's forgiven.
If she did not refinance, I believe January 4th to January 6th, the fire department will require that we can release anyone.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Randy. ICMA, Mr. Twist.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since the year 2006, the city of Cartersville has partnered with the ICMA Center for Performance Measurement. It's essentially a subscription-based service. What they do is they collect performance data, jurisdictions all across the country, they collect that data, they clean it, they run some analysis on it, and they distribute that data to their partner jurisdictions. Like I said, we've been doing that since 2006. It helps us to kind of see how we stack up performance-wise to other jurisdictions. They also run through that data and find top performers and help to create case studies and best practices and things like that. And further, it kind of gets you in a network of other cities that are focused on performance measurement efforts. We've been recognized by ICMA CPM, the Center for Performance Measurement, for our efforts in the area of performance measurement, and we do feel that this service is valuable to us, and we would like to continue that. The tolls are subscription for another year, is $5,500. This is a budget document. We do have to save any verified documents in there.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this item?
I'd just reiterate what he said, and it's really a tribute to the work that you've done on it. It's a nationally recognized program. It's now being integrated into our operations on our staff meetings, and you've done a good job on this.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Greg, you've got the next item.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. This is an agreement with the Bartow County School System, the same as last year's for the Renner Derris School High School pool for our winter swim program. I do have the re-verify ID number, and I recommend the approval of this agreement.
So you have documentation that proves that the Bartow County School System are not illegal aliens?
Well, I have an ID number.
Because we, we need to make sure.
I do.
Okay. Last year, when we approved this program, it was on the condition it was going to break even?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we are in the net of 28, just over $2,800. We had revenue of $23,450 and expense of $20,639 and some odd cents, so we were lacking in this program.
What are you going to do with all that extra money?
Sir?
What are you going to do with all that extra money?
I hope we do again this next year. But I will say, one of the things that did help us, we were able to open up, not only for the, for swim practice, but after the school team was over, we opened it up for adult lap swimming that used the pool during the same hours, and that, you know, we were very worried that we would not make, we would not make that, but doing that did help us.
I mean, I do jest, but I had two sons that went through a swimming program, and to go indoors, they had to drive 45 minutes that way, so it's a good thing that we do have that locally. I appreciate you doing it.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Gary, I believe you're next.
Yes, Mayor. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission ordered Bear Creek Storage, it's one of the storage fields we use, to file a rate case, and as a result of that, there, there's going to be a reduction in their rates. That we passed on to Southern Natural, which will give us a discount, and this is a discount agreement, and I'm asking the council to approve. You and the city clerk sign it once the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approves it.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Feel free to make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Chief Carter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would bring before you this evening the final piece for narrowband compliance for the fire department. This will be the narrowband compliance with the FCC for our warning sirens that are located throughout the city. This is the replacement of those radios, the base radios to operate that. Of course, as you know, the narrowband goes into effect January 1st, 2013. We did attempt to solicit multiple bids to be able to complete this project, however, we were unable to find vendors other than one that's located here that could actually handle the magnitude of this project. We surveyed all the municipalities and governments around us, so it's why it's a single-source deal. All documentation is on file. It is below budget, and we request your approval tonight of $13,300 for this project.
And we are certain that whatever we put in place moving forward with the county, that this will be compliant and compatible with them?
Yes, this is actually the same vendor that handled the equipment for Bartow County, and is also coordinated through our 911 center. And, of course, this particular company handles the maintenance for the warning sirens and have done so since they were installed.
Okay.
Of course, this is something that we need to do, but if you're curious about what federal unfunded mandates look like, this is one.
Yes, sir. I would say that it has no appearance.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Monthly financial report. Mr. Reinhardt.
Mayor and Council, we're looking tonight at the May 2012 and February 2011 basis. In the general fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $111,000. Expenses have also decreased by $173,000. This is due to decreased capital expenses. For three years, the revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, I look up in sales tax, there's an increase in that of $376,000. Police fines and forfeiture, increase of $56,000. Billing permits and inspection fees, increase of $22,000. The water and sewer fund, revenues have increased from last year by $6.89 million. This is due largely to a $6.62 million bond closing that we did last month, in the month of May, I'm sorry. This is, this is a bond process that goes towards the several large water projects and smaller water projects that need to be done. Expenses for the water fund have increased by $116,000, and this is due to increased capital expenses.
We have to add that on.
In the gas fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $3.95 million. Expenses have decreased by $3.21 million. This is due to decreased cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have increased by $3.35 million, while expenses have increased by $2.25 million. This is also an increase due to the operating expenses and increased cost of purchasing electricity. In the stormwater, revenues have increased from last year by $40,000. Expenses have decreased by $269,000. This is due mainly to decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased from last year by $56,000. Expenses increased by $159,000. This is due to the increased capital expenses. You remember, we did purchase a recycling truck and recycling carts. The recycling truck we had been reimbursed for from the GM bank, the recycling carts, we did receive our money in two quarters. And last, in the fiber optics fund, revenues decreased by $157,000, while the expenses have decreased by $71,000. This decrease is due to decreased operating expenses, decreased mea culpa expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And that is my report for the committee.
Any questions for Tom on the finance report? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have before you a resolution that was given to you prior to the meeting. Offer up, someone care to offer up a motion to add that item to the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added to the agenda. Mr. Archer.
Yeah, in connection with the stormwater improvement project on a adjacent to One to Drive, there's the need for the city to acquire some properties for easement, both temporary and permanent easement, for the construction of that stormwater improvement project. And you have before you a resolution authorizing the city attorney's office to acquire two tracts of realty by easement. The first one being 895.19 square feet, and then parcel three being 2,772.57 feet from Ronald and Tricia Murphy. We have negotiated a price and have an option that will accrue free this for a $6,500 purchase price. The next parcel is 209.75 square feet, with parcel seven being 145.33 square feet from F and S, F partnership LLC, for a total negotiated purchase price of $628.49. The attachment to the resolution is a flat showing the location of these parcels in that project. We would request that the council approve and give us authority to close on these acquisitions.
Okay. Discussions on this resolution? And if there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. We have, we're changing things up just a little bit tonight. We are, we're going to be going into closed session, but that concludes all the business that's on our agenda. Now, I will ask at this time if anybody has any additional business that needs to come before council, that they please step forward at this time. And if you would, sir, state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Yes, sir. My name is William Lopp, 310 Glen Lake Drive, Sandy Springs, Georgia. My name is William Lopp, and I'm a certified public accountant, and I'm running for the 11th congressional seat here in Bartow County. As a CPA and a neighbor of lantern, I've lived a charmed life. I went to high school, I was able to have a job. Went to college, I had a job. After college, I was able to get a job. In high school and college, even a little bit after college, I painted houses, I cleaned gutters, chopped firewood. I worked in restaurants. I'm number four of 11 siblings, and I only know compromise and agreements. I want to go to Washington for you, for me, for us, and for my children. I am charmed again, just today. I'm a certified public accountant, have a public accounting practice, I have clients here in Cartersville, Cobb County, all District 11, a satellite office in Macon, Georgia. And this is something that I opened up myself some 25 years ago. Been in accounting for almost 30 years. I talked to bankers today about loans for businesses. I talked to property owners who are being foreclosed on their property. This is today. I talked to strategy with people that are being foreclosed upon or can't make their debts or can't make their payments, and talked about what we can do for them today. I talked to clients that are being collected, collections are being pursued by the Department of Treasury or the Georgia Department of Revenue. We're not trying to beat the tax system, we're trying to work within the system. And that's what I do today. I got other good news today. More babies are being born. I'm the tax guy, running for Congress in the 11th district, streamlining taxes, term limits, and the education of our youth. In the 11th district, I'm one of 11. This is the 11th city I've been to. Save the best for later. Nice to see you guys. With streamlining of the taxes comes investment in jobs. I have a very simple solution that I can put into play today. When you invest your money now and you get a deduction now, we can get immediate job growth now. It really is that simple. Certainly, there is limited incentive. Currently, there's limited incentive for people to invest in America because of limitations on deductions. For example, as your income rises, you get phased out of student loan interest, mortgage interest, donation, donations, and the list goes on and on. In effect, the tax code is rewarding the people that are not doing as well. Our current administration refers to this inequity as fairness. This is rewarding mediocrity. On the corporate side, we used to be number one in innovation. Now, we are number one in corporate income tax at 39 percent. Simply reduce the income tax bracket down to 25 percent and get rid of the government-sponsored favoritism. How do we get rid of favoritism? Term limits. We do not need career politicians in Washington any longer. Two terms for the president, five terms in the House, two terms in the Senate. This alone will keep fresh ideas in Washington. Finally, readying our youth for the 21st century. We need to reclaim the lead in science and math. Currently, we spend more dollars per capita than any other industrialized nation. Yet, we are number 25 in the world in education. Spending more money is not the solution. Spending money wisely is. I am for fresh ideas, for streamlining taxes, for term limits, for readying our youth for the 21st century. My name is William Lopp, and I am the best choice for the 11th district. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening? All right, so I'm going to tell you, we are, we are not adjourning the meeting. We are, in a moment, I will ask for a motion to go into closed session for purposes of property acquisition. I will tell you that after we come out of that meeting, we're going to adjourn the meeting. So, am I comfortable, am I confident in saying that?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you believe me, have a good night. If you don't believe me, we'll see you back here and see firsthand. As Keith Lovell likes to say, govern yourselves accordingly. And we'll sign papers and things after the meeting is... So I need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of property acquisition.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't... Help memo. Somebody get the memo.
It's a fair ball.